Okay, at 6:30 I call this meeting to order. Hopefully this is actually getting recorded. We have a bit of a special situation tonight. Ben Fisk has asked for a refund of the fees he was charged for the town attorney being involved in his ZDA case. Ken and I have to recuse ourselves. I because I was on the zoning board at the time. Ken because he has a business relationship with Ben. So we have to do this really interesting thing where Ken and I are going to step down. We're going to swear in two temporary members who will act on our behalf to decide this and then they'll get kicked out and we'll be back in. So we have three. In case we were missing one, would you three like to decide among yourselves which two?
We're just talking about that. Well, good idea. So.
All right, where's? Oh, there you are. Okay, you could play rock, paper, scissors. Yeah, if we had straws, we could draw lots.
You need money, mom.
Yes, this is this is very official. Yes, and by the way, use the wireless microphones if you're going to say something. And announce your name. Okay, guys, I have three pieces of paper here. Two have a Y on them and one has an N on it. I will hold them out. I'm just gonna hold them up. Pick one.
Oh, I don't even need it. So you pick one.
There can be the nine or. Hey. The two Ys. How many do you want?
It's two Ys.
Two Ys. So the two Ys.
They're wise. Where the wise guys?
You're good. You too. Okay. Okay, I'm gonna get this thing rolling here. All right, ready? I move that we temporarily appoint our town moderator, Phil and William Matandra, to be selectmen for the purposes of deciding the Ben Fisk refund question. Ken and I at this point will recuse ourselves. First, we have to vote on it. All in favor? All right, now Wendy will swear you in. And then I'll give you some final instructions and get you rolling.
So we're gonna do just what we do with town meetings. You'll say your name and repeat everything. Okay, I. Do solemnly sincerely swear it affirm. That I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform. All the duties incumbent upon me. As temporary. Of Temple New Hampshire. According to the best of my abilities. I agreeable to the rules and regulations of this constitution. And the laws of the state of New Hampshire. This I do under the pain and penalties of court.
Okay, you're official. So this is what's gonna happen. Ken and I will step down. You can be seated up here. You can choose to take a public comment or not on this case. You can question anyone you feel like questioning if you need more facts. You are not required to take public comments. You can either debate here in public or if you feel you need to discuss legal matters that should not be public, you can go into non-public. Carol has a form and she can walk you through it. And you can go back to the annex. If you go into non-public, once you make a decision, you have to come back here, go into public and state the decision publicly. That's it. I can no longer.
I would like to ask a question to which I would like a yes or no answer. I am aware that the chairman of the ZBAA at the time wrote a set of points. And I need to know, I need to know, yes or no, was it ever given to the attorneys? You can answer this question because this was part of your job. It doesn't, it's not up to them to say it's irrelevant until they have seen it.
I move that we go into non-public. In the annex. Second. All in favor? Okay.
So the basis for that is the last selection. Not, somebody's gotta tell them. It's the last one now. Carol knows this. Now Carol can walk you through it. You can all hit for the. If we have questions.
George? George? Can we presume that by going into non-public, you're not going to allow any input into this question from the public?
No.
Okay, thank you.
If you want to talk to someone, you can come out and ask them to come into the non-public.
Okay, that was my question.
Okay. We had a discussion about reimbursing Ben Fiss for all the legal fees. Amount to fourteen thousand dollars on the advice of council. I made a motion that we reimburse Ben Fiss the full fourteen thousand dollars. My motion did not carry, it was amended, and the motion was made to offer Ben seven thousand dollars as satisfaction of his legal fees. That was voted on two to one vote. And so I'm asking you if you would accept the seven thousand dollars as the legal fees rather than the fourteen thousand?
I don't think I would. I think we got in a public minute now that you guys are admitting that you knew that you did something wrong. And by doing that, I just take it to court and I'll win a court case a lot easier to get the rest of my money. I mean, you're obsolete. See, the problem with that is that you know no one else has ever been charged. No one in the history of town, before me or after me, so all you're saying is that I did it correctly and you don't charge me.
So, I mean, you trying to give me half my money back is openly admitting that the town was in the wrong.
Well, I would have to agree with you. So, I think at this point, I guess he's gonna have to bring suit against the town because we can't get a favorable vote.
George, can I, can I ask my lawyer tomorrow and give you an answer what he wants to do from here?
Yes, you may.
Thank you.
And this might be continued to another select board meeting.
Yep. With the, reading what we got from the town council, a handful of town councils, three of them. Their suggestion was, they said that, you know, that the papers were signed, things were agreed, there was, there was an amount of time that was for, what's my call, to say. Well, no, there was, there was an amount of time for, I'm spacing on the word, appeal, that's the word, thank you. I forget names and words all the time. So, there was a time for an appeal. But that was, I guess the, the event was in spring of two thousand? Right? When you were asked to pay for that? Was that, was that when this happened?
No.
Okay, when, when was the?
Two thousand twenty-two.
Two thousand twenty-two. Okay, it was, it was this year, okay. Okay, I had the impression from somewhere that it was much earlier, so thank you for that. But anyway, the advice of, the advice of legal counsel was that, you know.
Was it 'cause, was it 'cause Chris Dresser was on every meeting where he typically didn't, wouldn't be there? And so they're trying to say I wouldn't have to pay part of those fees?
I understand that some of us don't.
Yeah.
Mr. Kyler.
Thank you. I'd like to make two categories of comment. One is the zoning board several years ago spent a lot of time redoing all of our applications, a lot of our procedures, going through everything. And we went to a lot of training, municipal association training. One of the things we talked about was reserving the right to charge applicants for professional service fees. And a lot of the thinking coming from the municipal association and then talking to other towns that had that provision was, you know, what if a big corporation comes in and wants to do something that violates zoning? If you don't have the ability to fight for what's right for Temple, then you're gonna get steamrolled. And in this situation, day one, the abutter showed up, showed up with an attorney. Ben showed up with an attorney. There were all kinds of experts there. We wanted to be sure, the zoning board wanted to be sure, that we were doing what our zoning calls for, what the state regulations and so forth call for. And that whatever our decision was, was gonna hold up in court. And we were criticized a lot for taking too long. But the reason we were careful was, we didn't want this, whatever the decision was, to end up in Superior Court. We came up with a lot of conditions to protect the neighbors, the town, et cetera, et cetera. I'd like to now switch to a, a different subject and a different part of this subject. The town of Temple was a party in a, in a court issue not involving Ben at all, where this select board was criticized by the judge for circumventing a decision that the zoning board made in this other case. The town's lawyer, who I presume is at least one, if not two, of the parties in these documents that are not being shared with the public. The town's lawyer was reprimanded, my words, for doing a lousy job in protecting residents. So here we have another situation, same lawyer advising the town to circumvent a decision by the zoning board. How wise is that? And I, I take it, not, you know, just for the impact to the taxpayers, but also the abutters. The abutters decided, obviously I was not a party to this, not to pursue their case into, in Superior Court. They let the thirty days go by. But they did it based on the full decision by the zoning board, including all the conditions. This would violate one of those conditions. And it's not the first condition that the Temple Select Board has pulled back on relative to this case. There was a requirement that an engineer oversee the construction of this building. Okay, okay. And this board decide, and this board, okay.
One at a time, one at a time, one at a time. We can.
Okay.
Excuse me.
This is totally, okay.
We're talking about a different case, John.
No, I'm not, I am not, George. I am talking, I understand why they wanna disrupt this procedure. Let, let me know when the public can continue, George.
Hang on, hang on, hang on. We, we can do one at a time. It'll be fine.
Okay, I have the floor?
Correct.
Okay, so I'm talking about the Ben's case. I'm talking about the condition that requires an engineer to oversee the process. The select board decided that that condition was inappropriate, unnecessary, I don't know. So now, with this situation, you have at least two conditions that could be used by the abutters to open up this case. The last thing the applicant should want is for the abutters and their lawyers to get back involved. So, there, there's a history here with this board of circumventing.
One at a time, one at a time, please.
There's a his-
Just give it a moment, give it a moment. He can respond.
There's a history here of this board, the regular select board, circumventing zoning decisions and being reprimanded by New Hampshire Superior Court. Recent history. This is the second example of the select board changing multiple conditions, which opens up the opportunity for the abutters to go back to court. And it would be a real shame, given all the work that's been going on down there, for this whole thing to come to a halt. So, I would encourage this board to consider this very seriously. I would encourage the committee here to ask for the document that Mr. Rizell's advice from council was that it was irrelevant. It's far from irrelevant. Thank you.
Can I ask a question on what abutter you're referring to, John?
I am not talking to any of the abutters. So, all I'm saying is, based on the decision and all the conditions, the abutters decided not to go to Superior Court. They, they filed actually and they would do their, their filing.
Do you mean the, the people that weren't actual abutters? I mean, it doesn't matter.
I, I do have one question for the selectmen. Has anyone ever been charged for ZBA case before me or after me?
Not that I know of. Well, I don't think you are in the joint.
The question wasn't to you, John. The question was to the select board.
I took the advice of the lawyers that represent the town of Temple. Okay, so the decision was made to offer Ben seven thousand dollars in lieu of the fourteen thousand. That decision was voted on and we made the offer to Ben. And I think that concludes this whole matter until we hear from Ben's lawyer again.
Yeah, and I, I appreciate that back. It's not really about the money to me. It's about the wrongdoing, the way that the town did it. And it's to make the point that, you know, it shouldn't have never happened that way. And John states that, you know, this was put in place for a large business if it came to town and it was gonna, you know, help them out. I'm not a large business. I'm a kid that started a company at five years old in the town of Temple, New Hampshire, and have built it up and have grown it so I can need a larger facility. It's not a new business. It's not anything different. It's an agricultural business. He charged me to try to stop the project and slow the project, and that's the point behind this. You know, I'm lucky that I don't bring a case and ask for interest or more money for, you know, taking so long. The state of New Hampshire just put new rules in for, to make this so it doesn't happen ever again.
Okay. I, I would like, if it's possible, to, to close discussion on this for now.
All right, I'll make mine when I get, I'll make mine when I get back up there.
So, can we, do we need to vote to close discussion on this?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor? All right, aye, aye, aye. So, with the information that we had, we made a decision. And we made an offer according, and it, it's exactly what, Laura, no, what Laura Spector Morgan, one of the town attorneys, said, said to. Hey, both, everybody calm down and sit down. Bill, please sit down. Everybody sit down. Everybody relax. Everybody chill. We just voted to end the conversation with the, and we did, as, as that particular attorney recommended, which was to make an offer, and if Ben decides to make a counter offer, then we might could sit around and do this again. But whatever, whatever, it's, you know, you discuss it with your attorney and it's.
We've agreed to end the discussion of this subject. We gotta go, we're gonna continue on the regular select board.
Yeah, I move that we move, I move that I move out of here. How's that? Do we, and do we have to end the, the pro tems or?
Yes.
So, we, we have to vote to?
Is it temporary?
I will, I will, I will vote to end the pro tems and bring the regular select persons back to deal with all the stuff that I don't wanna deal with.
Absolutely correct.
I imagine. We'll be back.
We are now going to resume our reg, meeting, and we'll start with public comment. We've already had some. But first, I'm gonna make a public comment. I am really fed up with behavior of a couple of people in town who, when they hear something they don't like, impugn the character of this board, the board's attorneys, everybody involved, that doesn't give them the answer they want. I did not coach anyone on this. They were given only the documents from the lawyer and the other relevant documents. The document Gail was referring to was deemed not relevant because it is not a case of what the ZBA has for rules. It is a case of what is legal to charge someone in this state, and there is definite case law for it. Third, this crap about the town being censored by the judge and the courts is total nonsense. I suggest you reread that, John. I did read it. It, the last line in it says, it's any footnote, the last line of it says, the judge finds no, I forget the exact wording, but for the course, purpose of his ruling, finds no error with the town. It's right there in it. Of course, there's reasons. We just want, all right, fine. So, any other public comment? This is the most exciting meeting we've had in a while. Go ahead. Yeah, go ahead, sure.
So, we had a subdivision application with some lot line adjustments for Van Broe that came to the planning board last week. And the surveyor had done a title search and found that there is a.
Ah, yes, you should. Announce your name.
Christine.
Don't let it bite you.
I know, it got me last time. Christine Robidoux, Chair of the Planning Board. So, we had a subdivision application come to us from Nick Row, and it's for five A lot twenty-four. And the surveyor, when he did his title search, found that there was about an acre-ish piece that they couldn't find who the owner was. And the surveyor, when he did his title search, found that there was about an acre-ish piece that they couldn't find who the owner was. So I'm gonna give you-
Okay.
Did you find out who owned it?
Nope.
Well, I, I talked to one of the Holt's, and, but I didn't talk to the one that handled all the Holt stuff.
Okay.
So she was not aware of it.
Okay.
So I will probably be talking to her sister.
Okay.
Who was in charge of the administration for June Holt's.
Okay, so I talked to Avatar at the municipal conference and explained the situation and said, we, we don't know. There may be somebody in town who's a descendant who may know more about this, but, you know, I didn't have that information. But Elizabeth pulled the tax card for 524, and this, that's the last page that I just gave you. I think it's from 1979, no, 78 is the date. And it looks like from this card that that piece is part of Vivian's property.
Out of whose?
Vivian Will's. So on the, on the page, it says Mar, M-A-R-R. You gotta, gotta flip it upside down if you want to match it with the other maps, but-
That would be Mar.
Mar, yeah. So, so in any case, we still need more information, but two things. One is Avatar, Evan from Avatar, said he could do some research on it as well. And if he doesn't find anything, they could create an unknown owner parcel, which would, you know, you would essentially wait two years and see if anybody claims ownership. And after two years pass, then you could sell it for whatever, whatever is appropriate, yeah. And I know that Nick Rowe is interested in purchasing it. He's not going to be building on that piece, but he was hoping to use it for a part of this farming, which obviously he'd wait until this was settled. The other thing, when I talked to Nick Rowe about it, was that he had talked to an attorney who said there's something he could do called a quiet title action, which is basically him, his attorney initiating this claim that when he purchased the property, he thought he was purchasing that piece, because if you look at our tax maps, it looks like it's, it's part of his parcel. So it would, it would, could expedite, but he would bring it to the town, and we'd have our legal review of it here and decide what to do from there. So those are two other options that may, we may need to pursue. So Elizabeth will look into it, Evan will look into it, and we'll see what happens with the attorney for Nick. You have any questions about it? Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other public comment? Connie? We're doing under other business, but we can do it now if you want.
Yeah, so I need permission also to-
You want to use the microphone, please?
Microphone, state your name.
Where you live.
Carol Memzak would like permission to activate a new button on the front of the website for the recordings. So that's one question.
So she figured out she can, how to do that?
She's, she said she just needs to submit a whatever request, and that they will do it, so it's something she can do herself. But she needs your permission. So do I have that, and I'll go on to the second one.
Okay, let's do it. So I will make a motion, we authorize Carol Memzak to add a new button to our town page so people can see these recordings we're making. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I'll let Carol know.
Okay, the second part of this is, I've talked to Bill quite a bit about this, but there are two options, and one is to put them on YouTube. I've set it up, and it, it works fine. I mean, it works fine. The other option is to use Town Hall Streams, which is a company that you had in to look at putting in the AV system, and didn't think they were adequate to put in the AV system, but they do this for many towns, which is just a, you know, it's a piece of what they do, so it's not really reflected by, their, their, their work is not, in this area is not reflected by your decision not to use them.
All they would do is provide a streaming storage, video storage.
Right, right. And so there's, you know, pros and cons of each, and I don't have strong feelings about either. I will tell you that doing it on YouTube, you know, it's, it's gonna be volunteer until the town decides to pay someone else to do it, which is, you know, I'm glad to do it for now, if I'm not here or miss something, or do a misspelling, so be it. Town Hall Streams, it's all automatic. You just click the button when you come in and, and it's done, it's on the site. So, totally up to you. I, you know, it's set up, so I just didn't want to, well, didn't want to go live till we had the button, and didn't want anything deleted until you made the decision about whether to use this Town Hall Streams. Bill, maybe you can explain, I tried to, I did send Bill links and Carol links to both the YouTube and to the Town Hall Streams, a sample of how they would.
Yeah, so the Town Hall Streams guys, we did talk to them, they could provide a partial solution, not what we had. But one thing they will do is, instead of somebody having to go in and copy our videos from Zoom over to YouTube, they have their own video server quote, it's probably running on some cloud thing somewhere, and they can automatically pick up our videos and it's stored on their server. You go to it with a URL, just like you would with Facebook, and you can see the videos.
Can I interject? So the one, actually, the one bad thing about that was they, they only hold them for five years, and then they will return them to the town, but then it becomes a place of, where do you keep, keep them after that? And I did wonder if it was negotiable, the five years.
Well, it's also, it's two guys, from at least last we heard, and if they decide not to do it anymore, then the whole thing goes away anyway, so that's another-
Same with the volunteer.
Yeah, think of them as paid volunteers. Okay.
So if you can just tell me what direction you want to go.
We've got, you know, we've got that whole list that Keith put together of alternate ways of doing this stuff, we'll look at that, we've got a sort-
Wait, 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 wait. You're saying we're not gonna decide tonight? I'll just put the YouTube up?
No, we're not gonna decide tonight, go ahead with YouTube, we've got to think this through. It's gonna take us, we'd have to get it set up with those guys anyway, if we decided tonight.
Like that? I mean, for Town Hall Streams?
Yeah, we gotta pay them, and they've got to configure it.
Okay.
But yeah, we'll decide at some point.
Okay, so meanwhile, we'll go on YouTube.
Yeah, I think we need to get the whole process going before we start changing stuff. Okay, any other public comment?
Can I ask George one question?
Yeah, sure.
Hey, George, I was wondering if I can get a breakdown of like what the lawyer's decision of the $7,000 hours that he thinks you guys should credit me back, you know, determine why, what showers he kind of picked out in kind of his ruling there. Just be helpful, maybe, you know, the worst thing I want to do is ever bring a lawsuit against the town. You know, we love this town, we don't want to hurt it in any way that we possibly, we just, you know, want to make, make it right for us and for the town, and for the townspeople. So we just would be interested to see what the lawyer said there.
You should have asked while they were still in session.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just, we're just thinking about it, so.
It's, we'll take a vote of the board, and we can't vote.
Can't do that, okay.
George, did you guys seal the minutes, the?
No, we did not.
Okay.
And taking the advice of Laura Spector Morgan, she said that we probably should reimburse you the $14,000, but she also said maybe you could squeak by by just offering you half of that.
Yeah.
That was-
Yeah, I just, I would relay back there, it's about the principle.
I know. So you know where I stand on that.
Yeah, I, I'm not trying to push, you guys did awesome, and I'm not trying to push pressure against anything, I'm just asking.
Okay, so George, given what you just said, at this point, even though Ken and I can't vote on it, there's absolutely no reason that the legal opinion shouldn't be public at this point. And if the minutes weren't sealed, then I guess they are.
No, if the minutes were not sealed.
Okay, Carol, I don't know if you have a copy of it?
Carol, two of them, no.
It's, it's, it's one big thing with all, everything glommed together into one document. From two, two lawyers, three lawyers.
Oh, I have the emails.
I've got, well, I've got the condensed version that is, just put them all together and takes out all the headers and footers. I'll send you a copy of that. All right, there were three lawyers involved. Chris Gresher, Laura Spector Morgan, who is our current town attorney's boss, and Christopher Bolt, who is the ZBA attorney, and opinions came from all three of them. And and you will now see, when the documents are public, you'll see that those opinions from the three of them.
Everybody's decision, everybody's personal opinion of those decisions may or may not be-
I'm not saying that what they are, I said the opinions will be available, and they're from three attorneys.
I think we should reserve a public comment and continue with the business of the select board.
Yes, we're going, dragging on here. Okay. Is there anything we actually need to discuss under Old Business Tonight? Pete Caswell was gonna be here, but he's sick, so he's out. So I think we should just move to New Business. Fence for Library, Ken. Oh, and we'll stick you in real quick over there.
Thank you. Camilla Lockwood, trustee of the Mansfield Library, is an alternate. I seem to be sort of in charge of mechanicals and maintenance and other things lately. And a consequence of the charrette was the possible need for a fence around the, this area of the garden, of the yard, the lawn, because, as you probably know, Beth, our librarian, is doing more and more programs which involve rather small children who are fleet of foot. And so we talked about it, I thought about it, she thought about it at the same time. And so we went and talked to Crow Fence. I also talked to Kent, who seemed, he didn't even blink about that idea, because between those guys with the big trucks and everybody else at will, it seems like a wise thought. So first, a description of what was, we were thinking about is, it's just from the wall back there, along the area where the guys park their trucks, the pickup trucks during the day, and then across to the wall of the library. So it's just an L, it doesn't have to block the back, back part of the library.
Right, okay, so L shape in front of the highway garage there, then coming up this way to the end of the building.
Correct.
Okay.
And you go in front of the library also?
No, no, just up to the, the wall of the library, just further in from where all the mechanical boxes and rodent deterrence and things are, which is, Kent and I talked about that, it's about seven feet back from where the grass is, and that's so that when they plow, there'll be a place to push it without knocking over the fence, and people can still park, and it leaves plenty of space. This would be a very traditional picket fence. The only tradition, non-traditional is that it would be vinyl, because then you don't have to paint it like everything else all the time. Four feet high seems to be kind of the given for this kind of a protection for little kids. And it would be, we haven't really decided or talked about what size pickets. You can get wide ones or square ones, and the price is all the same. And then there would be those standard posts every few feet along it. It's just, just like baby cribs, the pickets can't be more than four inches apart, and it can't be more than four inches above the ground, so the little buggers don't tunnel. Anyway, not that they would. Anyway, this is 86 feet of fence, four-foot vinyl picket fence, and the price on this is $6,700, and that's completely installed, and it includes, right here where the parking is, a double gate, which will open and will allow the lawnmower in, the big lawnmower, and just one side of it can be used for kids and other people passing in and out. So the first question is, may we?
Any discussion?
Did you, did you include this in your budget to the BAC?
We haven't got to that yet. We need permission first, George.
Do you have monies in your current budget to cover said costs?
No, we'd be looking to put this in. This is all for next year.
Okay.
Yeah. So much as we ask permission to put that extra bench up there, it's the same idea, it's town property, so we can't just go putting fences up everywhere.
I have no problem with-
No, it seems like it could actually avoid some liability issues.
I don't have a problem with it either.
Okay, so I move that we allow the library to pursue
A picket, a picket fence to-
Yeah, obtaining a picket fence for the area described. Is there a second?
To be, to be
To be, to be budgeted.
Budgeted, but to be signed off by the board is on a final decision.
Okay, to be approved by the board before billing proceeds. Got that sorted out, Carol?
Okay, and, and so you, we can go forward to, talk to the budget people about it. Okay.
All right, there are seconds?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So yeah, go to the BAC. Oh, that's right.
She will guide us. Thank you.
Okay.
Microphone.
Has to do with a flagpole. I had taken pictures for Al Chip last week, and again, notice, I think I mentioned the last meeting how awful the flagpole is. And Tim said that he's been talking to you, Ken, and he has some prices from Old Glory for replacing it.
He had said he talked to someone over there, but I can't find the card that he gave me was not for Old Glory. So I have calls into there and the place Kent gave me a card for, for flagpole quotes.
Okay. I think it'd be a really nice thing to somehow get some quotes and get a decision made and have it in by next Memorial Day. And, you know, Tim said it's gonna need someone to install it as well. I mean, nobody, it's gonna have to be professionally installed. And there has been some thought about what to do with the grist mill that's underneath, and maybe find another location for it.
As I said before, anything that happens to that flagpole, that grist stone will stay. It's part of the town. I will find a way to work around it or through it
Okay.
to set the new flagpole, but it will not be moved.
Okay, great, perfect, perfect. Anyway, I did measure it, it is 50 feet tall, I think Tim said there was some question, you thought it was 50, he thought it was 40, but it is 50.
We knew that.
Okay, I didn't. Not everybody did.
Cause I had a-
Anyway, could you-
Take a tape to the top, measure it from the top down, hook the tape to one of the hooks for the flag.
Oh, oh, good.
And run up to the top and measure it down.
We use a software package to measure. So could you put this on your agenda so we could get this to the budget before?
Normally have been on the agenda, but we skipped it tonight. It's in, it's in the agenda, yeah, we'll do it next time.
For those who pay attention.
Christine, you CAC, and then we'll take your building permit application. Okay.
I should be pretty quick, there's not much that has changed.
Relax, we're in no hurry.
I am, I still have planning board work to do when I go home tonight. Broadband, we know that some new poles have been going up in the north side of town, and also I saw some new poles down on Colburn Road over near Maplewood, so that's, that's one of the other areas. So that's, that's one of the other areas that's not fully built out yet. So that's good news, but we don't have a date yet as far as I know. Yep. Uh, let's see, Connie talked about the audio visual equipment. I was just gonna share some feedback that we've gotten. One is that people really need to speak loud and close to the microphones, especially if they're on boards. And in the annex, if you're not sitting right next to the microphone, it doesn't really pick up the people that are talking. So we've got emails into Kevin at East West to try to help us with that and see if there's a problem with the microphone or if, you know, they didn't sell us what they promised, or what the deal is there.
They have responded already.
I, I didn't, I saw that there was a response, but I didn't read it yet, so. So we are working, he, he said Kevin responded, but I haven't, I don't know what the response was. Do you, do you wanna share what he said, or are you not able to look at it right now? He's trying.
I'm trying to figure out something on this Zoom thing, go ahead.
The other thing was, uh, camera positioning in the annex, just a reminder to make sure that it captures everyone at the table.
Yep.
Um.
And there is a remote in there, looks just like the TV remote, so you have to look carefully to figure out which one moves the camera.
Last time we were in there, we did move that, so we could get everybody on the table.
Yeah, you guys did, I think it was from our meeting, the CAC meeting, we ended up cutting somebody out that we didn't realize at the time.
Yep.
And then the record option, we, I think Keith worked with Carol, I think that's sorted out now, is my understanding.
Record automatically.
Yep, perfect. And the Bluetooth system is still on back order, they've ordered a few, and we're at the top of the list, so we'll get the first one that comes in when it arrives, so.
Okay.
Um, soon as we hear that it's in, we'll have it up here. I have the instruction sheets for both rooms ready, although I think we might tweak it a little bit. And just a reminder, if boards or committees wanna start using the Zoom option, to just let us know, and we're happy to run through a training for that. Then the other, only other thing I had was that the SWRPC transportation corridor meeting is December seventh, and that is a public meeting, so they want anybody who wants to contribute to the conversation about Route 101, thirty-one, forty-five, one-twenty-three, one-twenty-four, and one-thirty-seven. They want, it's for public input, so.
The same, the same discussions have been going on for fifty years.
I haven't done the conversation, so I can't comment on that, but I will be attending, and it is open to the public. And I sent the information to Carol, so there's a link for that.
Okay.
I think that's all I have, unless you guys have other.
For, for the AV guys, can, can we send them Keith? And if they could get us to understand Keith with or without the microphone, that would be awesome.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think so.
He's the challenge, but that's, that's the problem we're having.
Yeah, it wasn't just him, but yes, he.
He's probably, probably the, the biggest offender of trying, even with the microphone.
I know, I know, he talks softly, so, yeah, we'll remind him.
Okay, by the way, apparently we are actually streaming here because there's a couple of comments on the chat. I, we don't pay attention to comments on chat, because then it becomes part of the public record, which we don't want it to be. In fact, I think I'm gonna set it to disable chat rooms for all this stuff. Okay, next up, we're gonna go out of order here. Steve Concordia has a building permit application for Webster Highway, and since he's here. Might as well.
Steve, I looked at your building permit, which I am okay with, except for the fact that there's no basement plan, no second floor plan. I have to pull square footage off of your plans, I cannot do that unless you provide those things for us. So I would say that we would go ahead and approve this pending those documents.
I didn't, didn't.
The second floor has no dimensions and no.
No dimension of square footage.
But it is, it is an estimate, because that's the second floor with roof pitch, so we're not exactly sure where the roof, the walls are gonna fall underneath the roof pitch, but.
Right, but I need dimensions or scale, something to scale, something to dimensions.
Yeah, cool.
Okay, so I move that we accept the building permit conditional upon receiving the additional plan information for concluding the square footage.
Which means, don't stop, go ahead with what you're doing.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, just make sure you get us to stop.
Now, can we get back to the agenda in order that it's printed?
All right, next up on the agenda. Signed to trustees of the trust fund transfer.
That's right. Stick me agenda.
First one is for cemetery. If I can find it here. Basically, it's a housekeeping thing we do every year to get back some of the monies that's put into the town cemeteries. Can't find the damn thing.
It's right here.
So basically, cemetery maintenance, we're asking for four thousand thirty dollars. Cemetery repairs and supplies, three thousand three hundred and sixty-two dollars, for a total of seven thousand three hundred and ninety-two dollars. And again, this is a housekeeping thing, can anybody? So we don't have to vote on this, it's just reimbursing the general fund for.
Yep.
Yeah.
Um, stuff that we've already paid, the town's already paid for. And the second would be to move uh, transfer sixty-one thousand seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty-three cents from the annual highway block grant, account number three-three-five-four-one-zero to the Asphalt and Paving Fund Trust. Again, a housekeeping thing. We do this every year. Doesn't need a motion. There.
Okay, next up, review and approve building permit application, Kingston, Howard Hill Road.
Kingston, again, I have, um, I tried to get uh, square footage off of the plans, I cannot, I asked Carol to order me some scales, which we did get for the town, so that we have them, so that I can do this. Yeah, that was a nice one, only nine dollars for three.
I think it was an eighty-two by forty.
Yes, but it has all kinds of bump outs and square footage for the basement. Some of it is living space, some of it is utility space, so that has to be taken into consideration, as well as a two-car garage.
And they haven't got it signed off by the road agent or the building inspector. I mean, the building inspector and the health officer.
I believe the building inspector's already been advised, yes? For Kingston?
Yeah, Will Wild signed it, and I have Pete Caswell's email.
Yes, for Concordia.
And Kent has already talked to him about a driveway permit, cause there is a driveway on this lot.
Yes, it is.
So again, I'm gonna, I, I'm going to approve this.
Condition.
Conditionally, I have to get the square footage.
Also signed by the health officer and the building inspector.
And payment for the said permit. But again, don't stop, go. We will sort this out. That's my motion.
Second, on favor.
Aye.
You're gonna sign it for, oops, got it.
They can set putting foundation in, can't they?
Yep.
This is my coffee. This is. Oh, okay.
Still need to sign Concordia's too, yeah.
Go ahead and get assigned.
What is today, eleven?
Twenty-two.
Seventy-two. Get rid of all the noise makers.
Okay, next up, school care rate renewal. Uh, school care is the company we get our insurance through for town employees.
The health insurance for town employees.
Yep.
So we're up about six point six percent.
Yeah. Okay, I move that we accept the renewal, this renewal is effective next year, it's July twenty, twenty-three through twenty, June thirty, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
With us, Carol?
George, you got it. We have discussed many of these things, many times, and somehow, somebody always objects to something and nothing ever gets done.
I thought Peggy was gonna pay someone the pink flag.
That, well, when the guy found out what it actually cost.
Some of us just zoom keep the old flagpole, but there's others on this board that think we have to have a brand new one.
Well, the, the, I don't think we need a brand new one, I think we need one that doesn't rust, period. I, I, I don't see year after year putting paint on the same flagpole.
Unless it's free.
Or to make it shorter.
That pole's been there as long as I've been.
I think we should make it ten feet high, so somebody can get out with a piece, we should.
Which is eighty.
Yeah. Over forty feet building, didn't say anything about a flagpole, that's building. No, because that, cause that would be attached to your building, you can't do that. Um, I guess we're talking about number seventeen.
Yeah.
Um, seventeen is a veteran's credit eligibility, eligibility criteria. And basically, because of changes to RSA's, we need to adopt this new language, um, which basically states that, um, we're adopting our five hundred dollar veteran's credit, or if it gets failed, um, it will reduce it down to fifty dollars for a veteran's credit per year.
And this is a warrant article to show up at town meeting.
So I move what, what this does is basically, we have a five hundred dollar veteran's credit for everybody that's in town that, that applies for a veteran's credit right now, now because of changes in the law, the RSA has changed. So if we don't re-adopt this, this coming March, all veterans' credits will go down to fifty dollars. So that's what we don't want to happen, so this is gonna be two new warrant articles to come up this year to keep our current five hundred dollar tax credit for all who have served.
Right, it's not gonna change nothing. Well, a couple of people will again, but.
Yes, I mean.
This is really just a technical thing, they changed the RSA, so we're not changing anything other than approving it.
So, I move, I move that we have a warrant article created to re-adopt the property tax credit for veterans.
Second, on favor.
Aye.
All right, we'll add that warrant article with select board approval. Okay, what happened to signing the school care thing?
Do we have to sign some?
Somebody has to sign it.
Okay, just pass down your sign. Obviously. All right, next up is review of minutes, we have three sets. First one is Minutes of November seventh.
I have two corrections. One on page two. Yes. Review and approve, ever has preliminary.
Which one do you do?
On the first one.
We do win the month of November seventh.
Yeah.
I had them mixed up.
Under review approved, ever has preliminary DIA assessment to sales ration. Yeah, it should be ratio.
Yep.
And on three, committee updates. Zell noted the scheduled meeting was canceled by Grenville.
Grenville, huh.
Yeah, they're three towns over.
I didn't even, I didn't even, I didn't even, I didn't even catch that one, George.
I, I had to keep on Carol, so they don't.
So on these minutes, under first page, under number five, where it says flagpole painting update, no comment, Connie mentioned it looks terrible, uh, that has nothing to do with our gender items, and I want it stricken. It's irrelevant what Connie said.
Nice, Ken.
I'm trying.
Can't you all just feel the love?
Page two, under number twelve. It says, case noted, all of the repairs that are necessary, that will be needed on the fire trucks, I wanna add, will run the department over budget and will need to take out of our trust fund. On down, further on down the, uh, down the page, it says check requests, account number, new rules. This is not a new rule, um, we're gonna enforce the current rules. And then on the last page, three or four, under get, under get, under again, the fire department. Second sentence down. Upcoming vehicle repair that will need to be done this year, noting that they will be needing to use possibly all of their seventy-five hundred dollar emergency fund money.
Boy, it works, yeah.
Man.
Yeah, well, I was trying to rewrite the minutes, it's very strange.
I didn't try and write, I didn't try and rewrite them, I just, just wanna make sure if it's clear.
I'm just picking.
I get it, George. Uh, X, anybody else?
Any other changes?
Nope. Motion to accept as amended?
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Next up, Minutes from November nine, this was one of our special meetings.
I had no problem with this at all, and I would make the motion to accept as written.
I'll second, on favor.
Aye.
By the way, this was a four-minute meeting, probably the fastest we've ever had.
And Gil was even there.
It'd be recorded.
It's okay.
All right, another special.
I had to bite my tongue earlier.
November fifteenth.
I found no errors.
Uh, the only thing I found is, uh, on the bottom of the page, it says motion by case to set the preliminary tax rate to twenty-four ninety-six per thousands of valuation, uh, there is no second.
Yeah.
And there is no vote. We did sec, somebody did second it and we voted.
I seconded it and we voted. So add that.
Motion to accept as amended.
Second.
On favor. Aye. This was a five-minute meeting, by the way. Okay, committee updates.
Police board, we did not have a meeting.
We don't know when we're going to have a meeting.
Supposedly next month, but up in the air. Yes, they're pretty good.
Okay, any other business? I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So, so motioned.
George moved.
I second.
All in favor, aye, we're adjourned.
Aye.
Okay.